We'll call the select board meeting to order for June ninth at seventeen. Um, Matt Brown, would you lead us from the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. Pledge allegiance, be the flag of the United States of America, two great republics, one nation, under God, and indivisible, liberty is just as for all.
Wheels. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for June ninth twenty five.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
Uh, we discussed the uh, two seven thirties.
Well, there's unfortunately not much we can do about that, except um, soldier on, right?
Forward.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes for May twenty ninth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Back up.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? I'll lead off by saying that uh, May twenty ninth was a Thursday. Mary Lee, anything?
Yes, um, on the second page. Bottom. There's our sealed mail motion to authorize payment of one thousand five oh four sixteen for the mailing of the assessment booklets or come out of the assessor's budget. I don't have a name anymore, I'm only M L H seconded. You use M L Harris. Okay, and then on the last page, and we talked about uh, making a list of uh, concerning for the U D R. And it says that you were going to receive them, were indeed, this is going to be seen.
Right.
That's all I have.
That's fast.
Yeah, I'm good.
What?
I'm good.
Rob?
No, I wasn't here, so.
Okay, it's uh, any more discussion on the minutes? Very none? All in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here.
Um.
Just don't get your water in.
You're good. Okay, citizens comments, items not on the agenda. Mary?
Mary McIntyre, um, Castleton resident, uh, vice president of Friends of Castleton Rec and chairperson of Cash Bash. Just wanted to let you know that it's done, it's over. A lot of people are texting me or emailing me about what monies we made. We don't have a complete total yet. It was a two and a half months in the planning and uh, it's gonna take a little more than a day and a half to figure out exactly how much we made. We still have some things like uh, silent auction people, some left before they paid, so Woodard's, uh, we've moved it all down to Woodard's, so I think there's four or five items left that we need to collect the money on. We have a few items we need to return for credit. Uh, we're waiting on Roy's bill. Although I tried to talk him into just giving it as a donation, but he gave us a good discount. Um, but uh, we uh, it was very well attended, we got a lot of compliments, um. We had some snafus on our end, but I don't think the public saw them, um, and we were able to address them. Um, just minor details, we learned a lot, um, where we haven't had a debriefing meeting. Um, I know myself, I feel like I have jet lag, that was a lot, um, and um, we had plenty of food, that was one of our biggest worries, um, was the food, and we had plenty. We gave seventy six pounds of food to um, Slave Valley Cares. Um, we couldn't give it to Castleton Cares because it was prepared. And they don't have the accommodations for prepared food, only like canned food. So um, that's why it went to Slave Valley Cares, but they also uh, service people from Castleton, so you know, it's, one, it didn't go to waste, and two, anybody in need of food, they can go there. They don't get turned away from whatever town they live in. So I feel very confident that we did a good thing with that, and we're helping to feed a lot of other people, um.
A success?
I would say it very much a success, and I, and uh, from my standpoint, um, the businesses and were so supportive, and I think it paid off for every, all the businesses as well, I mean, um, Third Plates Pizza. I think they did a professional job, we didn't have any issues with the alcohol, um. And uh, unless somebody else, and you usually hear complaints, if people have complaints, you're gonna hear about it. So I think we did pretty gosh darn good, and thank you all for your support.
Thank you for your efforts. Just quick question, were you able to sell all three hundred tickets?
Oh, we sold all three hundred tickets, they a week and two days in advance, and people said, oh, next year you need to sell more. Oh, they, they sold so quick, oh, you don't know how many sleepless nights I had. Um, yeah, that was a lot of pressure, and you know, we might have to relook at some things of um, how could we do it so that we could hold more people? You know, I don't know. Um, we're, we haven't debriefed yet, we do plan to debrief, um, and uh, everybody's got a lot of notes down, um. But uh, and we got a ton of compliments on the building, um, a lot of compliments on a lot of the fine detail that they could see. But um, people were just really impressed with the number of community members that came in. And how nice it was to see everybody in such a positive atmosphere, um. You know, I was told, geez, I haven't seen so and so who doesn't live very far, far from me in like six years to talk to, might wave to him. And um, the tables were in such a um, position so that granted, there wasn't a lot of room in between the tables, but nobody was so crushed that they couldn't get up and move. And it was really easy to turn around and talk to somebody near you, um, and you didn't really have to hear the M C to know what was going on with the um, raffle. Because everything was displayed up on the board, you could see if your number had been taken down, and granted, we had to teach some people how it worked, because it was the first time, but uh, if you're number one, it was displayed over on the left, and it gave how much that number won. So I mean, it was really thought out, a lot of people, once they learned it, they're like, oh duh, it's right there, yep, okay, got it figured out.
It was a really, really nice event. I, I'm, even back in the old days of the town block dance, I don't think that that many people showed up. And uh, I know that your group worked really, really hard on it, and hopefully it was a very successful financially. But I gotta tell you, to see so many people from the community out interacting with each other, that in itself was like the essence of what the rec center should be. You know, redefining recreation, so it's not just Little League baseball, but it's, it's to get people in the community of all ages together, and boy, that did it. You know, everybody was there interacting, people of all ages, Mike was there, he'd tell you the same thing, it was a great event. Thanks so much, guys, for putting that on.
The, the other thing is, it's ADA accessible. We had a young gentleman there, um, in a wheelchair, was able to use the ramp. Um, we had people with walkers, um. Yep, it, it just worked for everybody, there was, obviously, it was a twenty one and over crowd, but we had twenty one and beyond all sorts of varieties of age and abilities, it was uh, it was great, and um, people, people were genuinely happy. I, I don't think I've seen so many smiles in a room.
If you could make a penny, it still would have been a great success.
That's good to hear.
Um, well, my daughter said, the only complaint she had, she had parking fare.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna ask you about parking, you have your.
Yeah, it was um, well, Indy actually handled the parking and.
Yeah, went pretty, pretty smooth, no uh, traffic jam, so it kept flowing, which was the key.
And, and um, you know, kudos to um, I mean, we had all sorts of business sponsors, but on the committee, um, we had um, Petey Terrelli, Joey and Austin, uh, Mary Beth Hattica. Um.
Lauren Woodard.
Lauren Woodard and myself, and really big kudos to Lauren Woodard, Eric Splat, Eric, Lauren Woodard Splat and Eric Splat and the entire Woodard family, because they had Woodard employees there decorating, um, on Friday. Um, Lauren's, Lauren took on the job of decorating the gym, and she did a bang up job, she brought in all the tables and chairs. Um, that's not coming out of the Cash Bash profits, I'm gonna tell you, because our profits would have been far less. That was all above and beyond, plus they, they paid for gold, gold sponsorship, um, but that was above and beyond. And Eric brought his dump trailer down, and that's where we put all the garbage, so the garbage did not stay at the rec center. Um, it was all toted off, um, and I believe the plan was to go in their dumpster at the shop. So, I mean, just huge, and then the people that stayed afterwards and picked up and had everything all stacked, just yes, we had our committee and everybody contributed, but we had a slew of support. So, thanks again for your support.
Thank you for all your efforts, all of it, not just Mary. Go ahead, Mary.
All right, now, I didn't hear the end of Mary's comment, but I want you to know that Lakeside News gave a very nice donation to the rec. They had a half page, and we gave it for half price. And we did write-ups just about every week, I don't know, since April. So we made a contribution, we made contributions every week that we have to give discounts to. Fair Haven Spring Flame, uh, any number of them, that we give discounts to every week. And uh, we do a lot for this community in terms of donations, so I just wanna make that clear.
Well, we know that, right?
We certainly appreciate everything, Roy.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you, Roy. Anybody else for citizens comments?
Uh, well, not citizens.
Is it related to citizens comments, or is it town manager?
Oh, it's citizens.
All right, if it's appropriate.
If the Lions Club.
Please go over there and speak.
I can't. If the Lions Club is looking for a new auctioneer, Mary McIntyre, I vote for her. She did a great job up there, and did anybody buy the green solid?
Yes.
She was up there selling food that's left over. Yeah, it was a good event.
Good, I would like to say something about that event, and.
Can you come up here only because that way the Zoom microphone can pick you up, and you gotta tell us who you are?
Mister Chairman, address the assembly.
Yes, you have to introduce yourself too for the.
Joshua Hoover, Joshua Ferguson, I'm a member of the rec commission, but I, I wanna offer a comment just as a citizen about this event being a testament to Castleton's sense of community, coming around the rec center as an asset that Castleton has never had, a lot of towns in Rutland County never had an asset like this, it's very unique. And it's a new ground, we're sort of endeavoring in a new space, and it's sort of this I, I was just impressed by all the work that went into it beyond the groups that, beyond the committee. I think every member of the, every current member of the commission was there, and uh, there was another comment I wanted to say. Just the support and the, from what we have from the rec center with the director and all the work that went, it was a lot of background work. And I think we'll have more events like this at Crystal Beach, more tournaments and action activities at Dewey Field. And I'm just impressed by the sense of community, that's what my comment is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Anything else, Mike?
Maybe on Zoom or comment, citizens comments on this?
Nobody. Rec updated.
So everyone got my written report, um, you know, we summarized the Cash Bash, which was a remarkable success for the uh, not only Friends of Rec and the fundraising efforts, but as well as a demonstration of what events can happen, possibility of events in the facility, in the rec facility, um. I'd go back to the money the board spent to be able to repair the stage doors, um. Paying Ron Stack to be able to fix those doors so they could be opened, which made it possible for the um, stage to be utilized, and those are the small things that we're looking to be able to improve in the facility. Hopefully to be able to have more events at the facility, movie nights, concerts, comedy acts, whatever the case may be, but that stage, it's still in need of sound, lighting, um, some electrical work, we had some electrical issues the night of the event, um, that have brought more things to light, but it's just a little bit more investment here and there in improvements and um, with the new gym floor and everything, it will be uh, it will be a highly sought after, um, place, I know that the local, um, drama club that we've been hosting on and off, they're not presently using the facility right now, but Sarah is interested in getting back into the facility. That would be another, um, possible venue for them to be able to choose. So, um, thanks to the Friends of Rec, and it was a great night, um, and there was a lot of work that went into it. Seemed like it went off without a hitch, really. Um, beyond that, our programming, um, our new programs with uh, our yoga and fitness and strength training are slowly picking up, um, members, um, registrants, so I think that once we can get, um, interest out, that those programs will build, many of them are doing this as a volunteer basis. Uh, Move With Diane is the only paid provider that we have, the other ones are all doing it as volunteers, um. As well, our uh, swim program begins next week, it uh, actually begins before our local schools even get out, um, it's a couple of days before. Um, and that's the time period that our swim instructor, John Lee, had available, he does a lot of area programs, not just swim, but um, theater in the park down at Wells, and he's well traveled in those circles, so he's hard to get, um, hopefully, we're gonna be able to, um, better accommodate our, our school schedule in the future, but um, we put out a request into the public. John asked for, um, the possibility of a swim float, because as of the last twenty years or so, the swim program has been walking up Route thirty to um, Gail's Dock, which is up by the uh, the restaurant, as I understand, um, and a local resident um, donated us a swim float, it's actually out on my truck right now, I just need to bring it up to the town off, town garage and, um. Uh, hit it with the heated pressure washer and clean it up, so we'll have a swim float for the purposes of swim class at um, Crystal Beach this season, and the kids will be able to stay right on Crystal Beach. Um, and as I understand it, there's no real use for it outside of Chris, outside of swim lessons, absent the presence of lifeguards, so if we're ever in a position where we do have lifeguards, I mean, we do have a lifeguard for, um, adventure camp, but we don't really have very many kids that are old enough to swim out to the dock. Um, historically, when I was a kid, you had to be of a certain age and a certain swim lesson or swim level to be able to go out to the dock, to be able to use the dock. They used it for lifeguard training and advanced swim lessons, so that's the plan for that, um, but uh, this is our last week for softball season, um, we've got three games, a game tonight, if they're actually able to get it in over in West Rutland. Um, game Wednesday and a game Thursday, and then that'll bring to our conclusion our grades three through six softball season. So, other than that, um, anybody has any questions about my report?
Any questions for John, from the board?
I'm good. You don't think. Well, my. At, at, when they talked last year about hiring, or maybe it was a shame, I don't remember, um, Beck Sinclair to do the weed pulling, you asked Rob to have it done after June first, his plan, and he's talked to John already. His plan is to do it this Wednesday, Thursday, he just called me today, he's got a tire issue on his boat or something, trailer. Um, so he said it might be Thursday, Friday, but it'll be before the swim lessons start, and he knows what he kinda can't do, but it's hand pulling. Um, the only thing, he's gonna bring the, the weeds over to the north side of the sucker brook to pile up and we'll, we'll get them from there and put them in the compost pile, uh, but other than that, it'll be, it'll be done this week.
And he called, he called me, is Beck a woman or a man?
Man.
Okay, all I've been doing is interacting on email, but um, he called me and we are gonna go over exactly where we intend on setting the flow, and I should say that Eric from Woodard's did indicate that he's willing to help me to devise an anchor and anchor it out there, which there could be some expense towards that, but it sounded to me like we were going to salvage what we could at Woodard's, so whatever that means. But he's gonna donate his time helping me to do that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Sean.
Good report, thank you.
And thanks for your team helping out the school as well, for the cash back.
Permit renewal for Brown's Auto.
Bob, you said nine?
What? It's something that's gotta be done once a year or every few years.
Every five years, I believe.
Every five years, we have a permit with the town to approve the location, and then the actual like salvage processes are approved to the state annually.
And it's safe to say you're in compliance with all the state regulations?
Sure are.
I thought you wouldn't be.
And the fee's been paid too.
Make a motion to approve the sort of approval for location of salvage yard for Brown's Auto Salvage. Yeah, was it one seventy Depot Terrace, Bama Zine Vermont? Correct.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any more discussion? Uh, Mark, you probably should recuse yourself.
I will recuse myself.
All in favor? Aye. Transfer station, change permit sales procedures.
Uh, this is just an update to, for the board, um, I made the decision to start also selling permits at the town office. Uh, so people can come in there, um, to purchase the permits. If they pay, there's, there's some caveats, he, I'm pretty sure Heath and Christine are, and now Megan are all versed on it, but if they pay online with a credit card and they come into the town office, we can't run their credit card, they have to have a separate machine for this, for that. So, um, we'll send out a message, and we wanna start selling them, or we did start selling them, uh, the
Tomorrow.
Next tomorrow, tenth, um, so uh, we'll still sell them up there, but because we're still having personnel issues, uh, was it fair to, to Heath to have him being bum rushed with people wanting by permits on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays right now, so we'll take some of the burden off down, down here, and we're gonna put Frank Johnson, or I mean Donovan, I'm sorry, Frank Donovan up there to help, um, as well. I'm not sure if you have the tablet yet, but we have a computer that they can run separately, so Heath can uh, be working on taking in money and with customers, and those that want a permit will go over and see Frank or Bill, whoever's.
Can you get a permit with cash?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you still check cash, credit card up there, down here, cash credit, or cash and check down here, but no credit cards. Unless you sit at the computer in the lobby and fill it out and put your, your own credit card number in there, then that would work, but we'll, we'll get some, I think there's some messaging here sent out, but.
Easiest process, if you, if you go online and fill out the thing and submit it, come to the transfer station within five days and let us process it, that's the easiest process. It takes me a minute, because you don't have to go through and fill everything out while you're there, I can verify your information, click your payment if you was thicker and send you on your way. But if you gotta sit there and make out the list of stuff on the computer, it just, more time.
But um, and we didn't talk about the permit fees, but I think after the last time we tried raising the permit fees and that raised a lot of ire with those patrons, so unless unless there's uh, uh, interest in the board, the permit fees will, are still remaining the same at forty dollars for a single, for the first one, correct?
Forty, twenty, ten.
Yeah. Unless you just have some.
I'm gonna make my yearly comment, I'd like to see Castleton's be a certain color and Hubbardton's be a certain color, or Hubbardton's be a different shape versus Castleton. That's what I'd like to see.
Just the cost, Bob, and so I'm not, I'm not being argumentative with you, but when we get this, the blowout stickers, they change color each year. We have to get two colors, and they're expensive as they is, as, as it is, so we have to make, how we make up that, what we're spending on those, just to divide up the two. I think it's easier to sort uh, get the, get the information from Hubbardon, um, on theirs, get it from Don up there, and, and just roll it into a spreadsheet, I think. Rather than trying to do it with the colors of stickers and stuff. Just my, my thought, just on how to recover the costs of the, of the stickers.
I just, I just see somewhere down the road, those guys are gonna have to distinguish, are you from Castleton or are you from Hubbardton? And I'm just trying to avoid that when that happens, and I see it coming, but that's all.
So unless, unless there's any desire to change fees, starting July first, um, for the uh, permits, I saw I had on them.
Okay, anything else from the board?
I don't think we wanna change those right now.
I have no desire to change that right now, the fees. Propane bids.
So we received one propane bid, um, as it's typical from Files Brothers, so there is no comparison, and they're offering a fixed uh, price of one fifty-three a gallon, and if you ask me what last year's was, I don't know, to go back and look it up.
Doesn't seem we have much of an option here, so I would make a motion to approve Files Brothers Incorporated at a fixed price of one fifty-three per gallon.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded, the only discussion I'll add is Files has been our vendor of choice for decades, or at least a decade, and uh, I have no complaints, and if we need their help, they're usually right here, so I think then it's keeping local, so, well, they're all local. So, I'm gonna call the question, and unless someone else has discussion, all in favor? Aye.
E-mine oil bids. So we solicited the bids, um, normally we get a third one, and that did not come in this year from local fuels. So we received two, um, two bids, and you don't have the sheet. And you don't have the compare, uh, roll-up sheet, but we got bids from Sam's You Save, um, and a bid from Champlain Valley Fuels. And both of them offered a fixed price per gallon and a price over rack. So I'll be, I've looked at these that.
I have looked at it, what's your recommendation, Mike?
That means I had to tell you that I didn't look at them. When I was on, I was on vacation when they came in, um.
I would go, I would recommend, and I'm not gonna overspeak you, but I would recommend going with a fixed price.
Yeah, you, we did that last year, and it worked out to our advantage.
Yeah.
Um, so I would agree to, I would agree with uh, Mr. Spalding had just said, um, and the two prices by Sam's You Save, uh, fixed price of two forty-five per gallon, and a fixed price from Champlain Fuels is two forty a gallon. And what's the, the last thing, it says, cost plus thirty-five cents capped at two fifty. So the highest that we would get, we'd have to pay for fixed price from Champlain would be two fifty, but they, they, on here, they put two forty, and Sam's was two forty-five, if I'm reading this correctly. And that was for an estimated quantity of fourteen thousand five hundred gallons for the year.
Seven hundred and twenty-five bucks.
And.
What is, that's the difference between the two?
At fourteen thousand gallons.
Yeah, yep. At the fixed price.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, correct.
But if you've got a fixed price, why have you got a cap of two fifty if it's already fixed at two forty?
I think that's another option, yeah, that's a different option, be their cost plus thirty-five cents with a total of no more than two fifty.
And apples to apples, Sam's didn't, uh, didn't, uh, offer that option, so the two that was ever comparison was the fixed price. Uh, straight fixed price and the price over rack.
We've been historically getting it from local, right?
We got, this year we get it from Sam's.
Oh, we're good.
We use both, um. We've, we've switched around over the years, but this year it's been Sam's.
Any discussion, what, what's your, uh, so you don't have a recommendation, Mike, so. Mark, would you like to make a motion? Put you on the spot.
Or. I don't mind being on the spot. I, I, I understand that our obligation as a select board is to provide the very best value to the taxpayers in Castleton. Which at first blush is the lowest price. However, I think there's tremendous value in dealing with local contractors, we've discussed that before. And, and sometimes we have not taken the lowest bid because of that value. And local dollars make local sense, and. I, I don't know anything about Champlain Valley Fuels, I'm sure that they're a really good company. And, and they probably treat their employees really well, I know that Sam's is technically not in Castleton, they're half a mile from our border. Um, they provide a lot of service to the community and they hire a lot of local people, and I think that. From my point of view. The seven hundred dollars extra is worth it to go with a local company, I know that. The town manager probably disagrees with me, that if we always take a local vendor, we're gonna reach a point where. Other vendors aren't gonna wanna bid on our services. And, and I understand that, but. Um, I still favor going with the, the closest local vendor, you know, if. Middlebury's pretty local, but.
Yeah, so Mac Allen's Fuel Depot in Fairhaven now.
Champlain?
Champlain owns Mac Allen's Fuel Depot in Fairhaven now, too.
That's what it is, we sent it to Fairhaven.
You didn't make a motion, you just.
I didn't make a motion because I wanna hear some other people.
Any more discussion before we proceed?
I, I'm inclined to agree with Mark. Starts being his girlfriend.
Well, both are at Fairhaven, and both are at Fairhaven, though.
I will say that they both employ people from the area, yes, yes.
Okay, I was unaware of that.
That'd be in the case, there's, there's a question out in the, in the.
For what it's worth, Sam's You Save won the five thousand dollars. Um, at the cash batch and donated four thousand back. They bought three tickets.
They're both sponsors. They're both sponsors.
Yeah, uh. So, just saying.
Not to make it any harder of a decision.
Then I make a motion that we, uh, give the contract to Sam's You Save for. Uh, fixed price of two dollars and forty-five cents per gallon.
I'll second that.
We're moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna abstain. Local emergency management plan, here's a live topic.
In front of you in your packet was the updated local emergency management plan, the NIMs adoption form. And the, uh, municipal, uh, plan, uh, LMP, uh, municipal adoption form. Uh, there, there are some things in here that I know are gonna have to be corrected and the addresses and stuff, but. It, it shouldn't hold up, it's, it's a living document, so it's not, it's not, it shouldn't hold up the, the approval, in my opinion. Uh, we'll just have to make some phone calls to get some clarification, but the meat and potatoes of the, of the plan. Um, it came through Vermont, uh, emergency management. They sent out a long form template, we do use the long form rather than the short form, um, just because I like to make things painful. And it's a good plan, I, I believe, um. It's a lot of detail in it, but if there ever a point where we have to use this and there's an emergency, um. You don't have to be an expert on everything about local emergency management, you can open this thing up and, and get some answers, so. I, hopefully you're, you're in agreement with it and we, we sign the adoption forms and.
This is the same as every year?
Yeah, it's, the format changed this year, but the.
All the stuff is the same.
What they managed to do is make more work for our bridge and internet director, so he had to redo everything. But other than that, it's the same thing.
Well, I know that, uh. Almost couldn't do that, between, uh, our representatives, between Pete Mantello and Mike Jones, that. They put a lot of work into this and they're more familiar with it than we're ever gonna be, and, uh. Trusting on their good work, I would make a motion that we accept this document as presented.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on that, um, Mark, well, we'll do this as a separate, um.
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, it's not just, uh, not to. I just wanna add to that, who's also on the team is Heath Goyette on our emergency management team, Cindy L, who was on the fire department. Um. Uh, Jeff Davidson from the highway department and Russ from the sewer plant, so there's, there are, whenever we have meetings, they're usually. It's the group that's meeting.
Good, it's a great team, thanks, Heath.
So it's been moved, did I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Rob gives you.
移到了seconded, we accept the local emergency management plan as presented. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right? I also need a motion, Rob, to accept their, uh, accept this resolution to use the NIMs.
Which we're already doing?
Yes, which we're already doing.
We're gonna make a motion to approve the NIMs adoption document for the town of Castleton.
Second.
They're moving seconded to accept the NIMs adoption document, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, we can move on to. Rutland County Solid Waste versus Solid Waste Alliance Communities. I'm gonna turn that over to Mike and, I'll turn it over to Mike and maybe Bob.
Maybe, I like that.
Well, I think mostly Bob, but.
Mike kick it off.
I did, um, uh, Bob, Bob had contacted me, uh, because. Back in the spring, we're talking about, uh, how do we get on SWACs, uh, their prudential board, their board. Um, to decide, for them to decide whether or not they would accept the town of Castleton in the, in the swap, solid waste alliance communities. Cause that's the process, has to go through that process first, and we missed the spring one and the next one's in October. They're gonna need this, um, if the select board wants to entertain. That, I want them to entertain taking on the town of Castleton, then we have to send a letter by July first. To meet the deadline for the forty days, I think, or forty-five days, whatever it was, um, I counted back on it, it was, I wanted to get it in by July first. Um, that left another meeting, um, in June to discuss it further, if the board wants to do that, but this was just to get it on, on the docket. Um, and, uh, I know Bob probably has a lot more to say than I do about it.
It's no secret that I've gone to the town of Castleton, and it's always been financially for me, now there's. A lot more issues going on at the Rutland County Solid Waste District, it's. I don't wanna say too much, but there's, it's a, it's a hot mess over there, um, they don't do us any favors. Both you and Mark have gone to meetings over there, and you see what. I'm not gonna pull no punches, it's quite the circus operation over there. They haven't, you said to me back in the spring, for thirty-two months, they haven't given us the information that we pay them to give to us. The former town accountant took out of her time to do twelve months so she could close out the year, and that was. Few years ago or even a half a, she took twelve months, which they're supposed to do over there, to put all the numbers together. Melanie took it upon herself to do that, so she could close out the year, and come to find out. The town of Castleton owed them to so Rutland County Solid Waste District another forty-three hundred dollars. So that tells me if they're not doing what they're supposed to do over there on a monthly basis or quarterly basis. They're not getting any revenue over there, so for the last twenty months. They're not getting any revenue because they're not giving us the information, and it's not fair to us to be doing their work while we're paying them. Well, it's gonna be somewhere between fifty-three thousand and fifty-seven thousand dollars this year. In district surcharges that the town of Castleton pays them. Um, they charge twenty-five dollars a ton for every ton of waste that's generated within our borders of Castleton. And we've averaged like twenty-one hundred to twenty-three hundred tons of waste. A little more than half at our transfer station, the other half or a little less than half is picked up by the private haulers. There's been confusion as to how the surcharges get paid.
They're paid through your tipping fees.
Makes no difference if you give your tipping fees to the Castleton transportation or you give it to the private hauler. That surcharge, which I call it a trash tax, cause that's what it really is, but that surcharge is in your tipping fees. And it boils down to. Pay them fifty-three to fifty-seven thousand dollars for them not to even do their work they're supposed to do. Or withdraw from the solid waste district, join SWAC, which is eight other towns that belong to SWAC, Fairhaven's one of them. And they're very, very happy, they've never looked to go anywhere else. SWAC charges by per capita, it's five dollars and thirty-five cents for each citizen of Castleton. What is our forty-three hundred people in Castleton? We would pay SWAC a one-time fee of twenty-three thousand dollars, covers the whole town.
For one year?
For one year, yep. Now, when they have a hazardous waste day, it may cost us a little bit more than what we pay to the solid waste district now. She really couldn't tell me, the leader of the SWAC.
I think they have less, I think they have one less or something like that.
Yeah, there's probably one less, but. In years past, they only collect a wheelbarrow full of hazardous waste, so it's not an issue, the stores out there are collecting. Light bulbs and paint, so it's, it's not an issue like it was ten years ago.
So what do you need from us on this?
I'm just asking for the board's support and letting Mike put the letter into the SWAC. So they can talk about at the next meeting in October, whether they would accept Castleton. It takes a vote of the people in Castleton, so it wouldn't happen until we have our next election. If SWAC would allow us to join them, we have to get their permission first.
I would make a motion to have the town manager. Apply or write the letter to SWAC to get on the board, does that work?
For consideration.
For consideration to get on the board.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion from, I have some, but any discussion from the board, Mark?
I have a couple of questions, so right now, we bring waste to SWAC and to Rutland County Solid Waste. Is that correct?
No, we bring our waste to the burner down in Hudson Falls. We can, we can use, you can use the Rutland County Solid Waste District Gleason Road Transfer Station, you can use them if you want, if you so choose. We can take our waste wherever we want.
So right now, because we're a member of Rutland County, what are we doing with them?
We, we take our recyclables over to their, um, the. Our material recovery facility.
Okay.
But you don't have to be a member to do that, you can take your recyclables there.
And they're gonna charge us the same amount?
Yeah, there's no break for the member or non-member.
So when we became a member, was there an initial fee?
I don't believe so, you're talking back in the nineteen eighties, we, they can't even find a contract where we signed to become a member. That's another whole ball of wax, but.
Because they own that building.
They do now, they didn't up until a little while ago, but yes.
So, do we own a share of it?
We do, we have stock in it.
And would we have a recourse to get that money back?
I believe so, yes. I'll get.
It should be. I mean, that's.
There's equity, there's, there's a lot of equity, we are the.
One percent of that building is.
We were.
Real money.
We were the second largest, now we're the third largest, I think we fall cell behind Brandon, Brandon's a little bit bigger now, cause we lost the population that we had. So, yes, we have a, it was right around ten percent of all their holdings.
Would you see if you could find that?
Absolutely.
I, I know it's very, very difficult to get any information from there, and, and I would say that. You, you know, I was the alternate last year, I went to a couple of meetings and, uh. You, you feel like you're having a stroke, I mean. They, they were three years behind in audited accounts.
They still are, aren't they?
Yeah, the twenty-two is our thinker.
And you mean that, on the account? I said to Mark Jay, why don't you give me the name of the accountant, I'd like to call him, I know what the holdup is, no, no, I'll take care of that. It's like, you're not taking care of it, it's three years old. Audited, you know, the, the statement should be audited, what, by? Four months, six months at the latest, after the close of the year, not three years old, I mean, it really. You, you think gravity was gone when you go to one of those meetings, it, it's crazy.
Well, I think we should at least explore it and have the conversations, so I'm inclined to, um, support the motion, but.
No further questions.
Anybody, anything else from the board? From the board? Mr. Newton?
Uh, Roy, Newton, who? Who's this, uh, other people you're gonna talk to, what's your name?
It's SWAC, it's the Solid Waste Alliance Communities.
Where is that out of?
The leader lives out in Missouri, but it's, it's just representatives from each one of the towns, West Haven belongs to it, Fairhaven belongs to it, and then I can't rattle off. Yeah, yeah, we don't really have an office, he takes care of all the business out there, but all the reps. And.
You take it wherever you want.
Yeah, you can take it wherever you want, it doesn't matter if you belong to SWAC or Rutland County Solid Waste District, they don't, they don't handle our waste. We take care of our own waste.
Can I explain that a little bit? Very confusing.
It is confusing.
So, the surcharge that, that Mr. Spalding was talking about, if we go and bring our trash outside of the Rutland County Solid Waste District. We bring to New York, they charge us twenty-five dollars a ton. Their fees to go into Rutland, to bring it into Rutland, their scale fees, their surcharges, everything's incorporated into their scale fee. With their, their tipping fee, when it says tipping, and so when you bring it to the scales, so no matter where we go, if we go outside of district. We're paying twenty-five dollars a ton for the trash that we bring to New York or Hubbard's, let's say, anywhere out of the district. We bring it to Gleason Road in Rutland Town, that's the only. In district place that we can bring our trash, that's only governed or whatever by Rutland County Solid Waste District. So, when we go over the scales there, you're paying their fees, which the twenty-five dollars is also figured in. So, we charge a hundred and eighty dollars a ton to go across the scales in Castleton. They charge over there now, I forgot what it was, do you remember what was he?
Thirty-five?
Yes, so they're like a hundred and thirty something dollars, New York's ninety-two. What's that?
But then you gotta add the twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars.
Fifty-five is with the, with the surcharge, I think, yeah.
It is, it's, everything's included, when we go to New York State, they charge us ninety-two dollars a ton. We're outside a district, we still have to pay the ninety-two a ton, plus we have to pay the twenty-five dollar surcharge, plus the New York excise tax, which isn't a whole bunch. And the cost of fuel and trucking and people to do it, so, um, it is cheaper to go to, to New York. And that wouldn't change under SWAC, we could still take it to New York if we're under SWAC rather than Rutland County Solid Waste District. That makes sense?
It does, well, just to make it a little bit less confusing, hopefully, um, no matter where we take it. We have to pay to dump it at that facility and pay their charge, whatever that is, in, in addition to that. We have to pay the twenty-five dollar surcharge, Rutland County Solid Waste, no matter where we take it. If we take it to Rutland County Solid Waste. Their tipping fee includes the twenty-five dollars, so there's really no significant difference. That we're still paying to dump the trash plus the tip, plus the surcharge. And the surcharge is their quote-unquote administrative fees.
Uh huh, correct.
I guess so, the question to explain to everybody would be, what, what do we get for that twenty-five dollars?
Well, you're supposed to get the financial records on a quarterly basis, but. Haven't done that, and supposedly you get support at all of your schools, I don't know, what do you get from the Rutland County Solid Waste District at your house?
Nothing.
What do you get at your business, Mark?
Zero.
An average residential house pays an extra thirty-five. An average residential house pays an extra thirty-five to sixty-two dollars. A year in district surcharges, just so you know.
And they also, they're also supposed to put together, if, when our license comes in renewal, they're supposed to put the, the SWIP, the Solid Waste. Implementation Plan. So the only difference between SWAC and Rutland County Solid Waste District on those is. Um, talking to Pam Clapp from SWAC is they might charge us an administrative fee to put that stuff together for us. But when you're probably twenty-four thousand versus fifty-seven thousand, um, and the. Uh, the difference in what we pay to them, I don't, I don't think they're gonna, the administrative fees are gonna be twenty-something thousand dollars a year. I mean, it's not gonna be very much at all, but.
And you gotta calculate the time that the former Melanie took to do that year just to close it off. That's probably gonna have to happen again.
Yeah, we're still chasing after the informations.
Yeah. So we're agreed that Mike's gonna start processing. We're gonna have the conversation, right?
We're gonna get the vote going.
Get a vote.
We gotta vote on it.
Don't got a vote.
Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
There's none opposed. So we're gonna have that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, properties recommended for tax sale.
In your pocket, um, uh, this is not, just to be. Here or for clarification, this is not the only properties in town, excuse me. Um, that actually qualify for this. This was the ones that, the worst, the worst ones right now and what the attorney. Had time to research on, so there could be another one that, that potentially could come your way, but this is what we have right now. Um, the worst ones, so, um, there's five properties listed on here.
None of these people have made any attempt to get ahold of you to try to make a payment plan or anything?
And a matter of fact, I don't even, if she put notes in there. There, there are some that have, that are on payment plans that have, um. Yeah, there's some in there. I look at them. There's some, there's some in there that have made, are on payment plans and they failed to pay over the last year. Anything.
They've made no payments in the last year?
Hmm.
Are these homes occupied?
Yes. Well, unless it's just land, no. But I think everything here is all, uh, homes. Yes.
I would make a motion that we go forward with this. There's only so much you can do and. Sounds like you've made every attempt.
Probably, it, because I'm. I do, I know some people that when they come in the office and, and.
You get to know some.
That, that people are struggling. Some people really are struggling, um, but then you work with them, you come up with payment plans and then they don't pay on them and. It just. For the people that are paying their taxes on time and.
These people have been reached out to recently?
Yes.
Sometimes this gets some action too.
Yeah, once it goes up for tax sale, they have a year.
Yeah.
And, and we've, in the past. There's only been a couple of properties since I've been here in the last seven and a half years that have actually went the tax sale, um, before that year period, they've paid their taxes.
So you've made a motion to proceed.
I've made a motion. If you've exhausted all.
No, we haven't had a second yet, so. Do we have a second?
I see, I hate to see it.
Been moved and seconded. Um, discussion rep?
I just, I just hate to see it. I mean, as, as long as we've reached out, I guess, and they've exhausted all possible options and we don't have any choice. Because they've known what the issue is, but.
It's been my.
These are our friends and neighbors and.
Oh, it's been my experience though that, that they usually are quite in arrears when this.
Oh, yeah, no, you're not. This isn't just.
It's also been my experience over the last twelve years on the board that this usually.
Likes.
It usually, uh, motivates some action.
And, and the, there's more, like I said, that meet the criteria that the select board approved for this, but. We weren't chasing after somebody that owed three hundred dollars or it was five hundred dollars. So they owe five hundred dollars. These aren't the people that.
Yeah, I get it.
Chasing, so.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Was that the aye?
Yeah.
Motion to the unanimous. Stormwater mitigation from the village.
I believe everyone's aware that the town is working with. Holtney Meadowwee Natural Resources Conservation District through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for a stormwater mitigation project in the village. Short history, we still have laid up stone and slate, uh, stormwater drains in the village. One of them's in the tree line that runs, um, north-south on the west side of the school, so library, you know, that drive between the library and. Uh, John Rowland's property, that, uh, stone. Uh, storm drain is now got trees, very large trees growing over the top of it, um. This project would. Move that storm drain to a new upgraded storm drain to feed into a treatment area, stormwater treatment area. That is scheduled to be put under where the basketball courts are right now, um, behind the, to the west of the, of the school. Um, it's a. Um, it's got chambers in it. It, the water's gonna settle out, uh, everything that we, that was explained to us. That is not gonna create a swamp and, um. Then you can put the basketball court and pickleball courts over the back over the top of it, um, any. Uh, runoff, if it becomes overwhelmed with stormwater from a storm, it, it diverts to another drain. That daylights down by the railroad tracks, so that it would just be connected to that, so it wouldn't change that at all. Um, but there are. Infrastructure issues, uh, under the ground that need addressing sooner rather than later. Uh, this grant, I, I had a meeting the other day and this grant, um, will pay about. Anywhere from two hundred to probably two hundred and twenty-four-ish thousand dollars out of what. Was, uh, explained to me would be a four hundred thousand dollar project. But that included hiring everything out. Contracting out. So I talked to the highway foreman today, um, what I'd like to do is make this the. First project of the year before we get into road issues and, because we have the beach, just little things that we chase around before June first. Um, that this, that we would, if we had to rent equipment to get a, a larger excavator. Um, and do the work ourselves to dig the trenches and get the materials, it's still gonna be a lot cheaper. And we, we looked at the cost and it'll probably bring it down to somewhere around. I think around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, pound share of it. Uh, I did some research today. Uh, we basically between the highway carryover. And what was, uh, projected in the ARPA that will have more than enough to do that and that. Those storms, and, and also included, I'm sorry, it also included putting in a catch basin in front of the library where it ponds up now. Every year it's a complaint from the library staff that it's a swamp out there. It's a lake and not a swamp. And this would put a, a catch basin in there and that catch basin would run, the pipe would run from that. Uh, area in front of the library to where the, the new one's gonna go in, which is gonna run in that driveway to the west of the school. Uh, so it doesn't have to, we don't have to go under the road because there is concrete and. For A, we don't really wanna mess around with that. So this would go on the edge like the water does. And I talked to Kerry Fowler, Kerry Fowler about it, um. I talked to the state about it on, as part of their paving project coming through. We're trying to get that pushed off, but. So this is the updates right now. They're still working on the plans, um, to be able to be able to put it off the bid and, uh. They're doing their homework. I had Fussin O'Neal, excuse me. Who's on that project, uh, they're the engineer for it, uh, talked to V-Trans. Who's doing the, and Du, uh, Du Boy and King who are doing the, uh, paving that was scheduled for. Two thousand twenty-six and I said, we, we're not gonna, if you, if they pave Route four A from Sand Hill Road all the way to the. East side of the village and then we tear it up, that is, fire me, please, because I'm an idiot. So, um, no, no comments. And, um, but, um.
All in favor?
Yeah. There's many eyes, um, but that, so that's what we're trying to work through with, uh, V-Trans and. I think we can get it done ourselves, uh, for the most part, um, there may be some contractor issues with it. We're not gonna put in those. The, the actual underworld, underground infrastructure that's gonna be contracted out, but we can dig trenches, we can put stone down, we can shoot grades and. Make sure the pipes at the correct grade, that kind of stuff, and it'll save us a lot of money, um, so. That's kind of where we're at right now.
What's your anticipated timeframe, Mike?
Uh, this would be next year, next, in the spring of twenty-six.
To the spring.
Yep.
And that wouldn't put our crew behind. You think the timeframe on this would be?
It, it would allow us to do it in time to get this stuff done. And still worry helping the beach out, get the sand up there, to do the little things like sweeping the village and getting the storm drains cleaned. Before June first, that's kind of like that, that time where Jeff and his crew really need to start focusing on. The projects for the summer.
Now, I know this is probably ridiculous, but. There's probably no cost share from the university. Every time they put another parking lot up there, it. Increases the amount of stormwater that flows to the north through the village. You know, and the, the football field is in a pond and that water's pumped out. The Africa parking lot never should have been put there in a wetland. And, uh. We're, we're having to figure out what to do with that water.
Yeah, it, it's, as far as this, the, the grant goes, they do take into account that discharge. And it's all about reducing the phosphorus load that goes into the Castleton River, which ends up in the Lake Champlain Southern Basin. So that's where the money comes from, is to, to get this phosphorus out of the, um, treated and that's how this grant. Gets funded is they had to prove, or at least scientifically, uh, put some. Not scientifically, theoretically, put together the numbers saying it'll reduce the phosphorus load by X amount of pounds or kilograms, so. That's what funds the project. And so that, that water coming out of the university was taken into account, um, and they will not be cost sharing in that. Um, it's state money, so it just kind of all gets gelled together. But I dug up the stormwater. Uh, master plan that was, um, done in the past and I shared that with the engineers because. My hope was that they don't have to redo, reinvent a wheel. Flood information's already been. Put together. There's actually two stormwater studies for the village, so I shared that and, uh, Brian thought that, that would help reduce costs as well.
Good.
Do you need any action from us at this point?
Yeah, just to give you an update of what's going on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Andy Vermile, um, just, it would be great, um, if we knew what was gonna happen on top of that after that project got finished. If the basketball courts would go in or pickleball courts, or if there's an opportunity to do something, um, while construction is going on.
Yeah, yes. So part of the grant, they have to return stuff to where. If it's paid before, they're gonna have to pay it after, but because the, the project caps off at. Probably between two hundred to two hundred twenty-four thousand, um, that's not gonna happen. It's gonna fall on the town, but I have. Proposed stuff to the select board here that would be, it would be calculated into what we spend to be able to redo the basketball court and. Put pickleball courts out there.
So Andy, I guess, um, if you guys wanna start, you know, put your dream hat, dream, dreaming cap on and see. You know, if you have some way to. Make that, you know, to improve the situation that's out there. If we're gonna tear it up and then put it back, if there's something we can do that would work, you know. Make it more, make it happier, by all means, let us know.
Great, great, thanks.
Mary?
Will this, uh, disturb the sliding hill?
No.
That, that's a lot of, that's a lot of.
That was all part of this, you know, when we looked at it, where to go, my concerns were, is water gonna leach to the ground and then all of a sudden floods the T-ball field? And are, they're saying no, um, but, so we can resurface over the top of it and I was talking with John about this. Shoot, we're talking about the pickleball association of the world, we could come in and do lines and help put lines down on court, so. There might be some cost savings that way, um, but, uh. We wanna put it back so there's still, um, entertainment can be had there.
But this may be an opportunity to make it a little better, so let's make sure that we think that through. Anything else, Mike?
Go ahead.
All right, then we're gonna move on. Uh, let's see, budget status, oh, wonderful. Here, it's all you, Mike.
Who has eight fifteen?
I have a question.
Uh, Mary Jorgia, sorry, Mary, I didn't have to see your hand.
Hi, that's okay, sorry. Um, I'm just wondering about the ta- timeframe and, I mean, it all sounds great, fantastic, needs to be done, fully support it. I'm just wondering what you think the timeframe will be in terms of an impact on driving on that. West side of the rec center. Like, will it be all of May or, you know?
It's probably gonna be quite a bit of the summer, um, I think, if we're starting off in April, a lot of the, the groundwork will be done. Um, I hate to put a timeline to it, but we're probably talking, I'd be into June.
That we will not have access to that side of the building?
Um, well, once the pipes in the ground are covered over, that, that might be opened up, but as far as like that. The time to dig a trench along that road, that might take a week or two. I don't know, probably two weeks, I'm guessing.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty hard forecast that right now.
Yeah, and there's gonna be contractors coming in and out of there, so the road has to be open, so they can get in and out, but it might not be conducive to. Civilian traffic.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we move on?
Anybody else on Zoom? It's, uh, just the highway foreman's on there, but.
Okay, let's talk about, he may need to be in part of this next discussion, uh, this year's budget, I believe we're talking about.
Yeah, and so I don't have any to give you. I just printed out where we're at and kind of tracking this and we had a spending freeze on, trying to reduce. Amount of expenditures between now and thirty June, minus those things that are imperative. Uh, to provide the critical services to the residents, um, I think we're gonna end up really close this year. Uh, a crop for the whole budget. There's departments that are gonna be over and there's departments gonna be under. Um, obviously the highway department has had its share of, um, maintenance issues and farming things out to be fixed, so there. Make the mechanics budget's already, already spent and anything going forward is. Um, above and beyond what we budgeted for. What we're, might be able to do, looking at this, is there some Robin Peter to pay Paul as far as, uh. Maybe we didn't use something out of winter maintenance and, but there's, there's things that carry over and under the. Uh, highway carryover, which we, I told Jeff he can't spend, that paving, uh, s-. The, uh, salt and sands, um, stormwater. Sidewalks, those are all money that gets carried over to help pay for the town's share of grants or maintenance of those different types of infrastructure. So we can't spend that because then it just takes it away from the future, um, especially paying. We got a sidewalk project coming up in the village, so we certainly don't wanna take money away from that. Um, storm drains need to be fixed. We don't take money away from that, so it limits it, what. What can be, um, ro- who we rob here, but I think personnel, there's gonna be some money left over in the personnel line despite the winter we had, so. Again, some people might be over, some people will be under, but at the end, I think we're gonna make it, but we're gonna be danger close. But I can assure you that services to the town, uh, we're not doing anything that's gonna jeopardize services to the town.
Do we have any more openings for a coin drop?
Friends of Rec, so they would help.
Anything else on this? Just keep us in the loop, Mike.
I will. And we're, we're, we're already starting into the, uh. Yeah, what's it called? Audit. Joe Jeff, I mean, Joe, um. Joe is already providing a lot of information on the audit, so he's, he's like in my pocket trying to say. Don't spend anymore, don't do anything, so, um, but. I think we'll be, we'll make it, but on the skin of our teeth.
Okay, so let's talk about ARPA resolution.
Okay. About the spreadsheet. So. I went over the numbers today with Joe and we are not on the same page.
You and Joe are not?
Correct. Um, so what, this list that you have goes back to the, the ARPA expanded obligations and what. Um. Was presented to the select board. And. Why you've got copies with no color, I don't.
We've got some color on the back page, some color in my text.
And this is not. not color, I put colors in there to, uh.
Red?
This is not, uh.
We're out of colored cartridges until.
Actually, use them all.
Yep, times are tough.
And then we're on a budget freeze.
Yeah, that's how it happened, we didn't order any more cartridges. Sorry, give me a second, huh? Wow, this isn't going to work, Dick, um, because you don't have the copies that, even if I look at my computer, you'd have to write down on your sheets, but um, so basically, this is in a nutshell. I talked to Bud Carpenter today and I asked him where we're at with the salt shed. So basically, with the, the two hundred seventy two thousand dollars that the town had in our coffers to pay for that, we're short about almost fifteen thousand dollars to get us over the hump, to pay Bud, right, then, um, the whole total, and again, I had this all on the sheet, um, but for some reason, you don't have the ones with color. Want to give me a second, just so, so I can talk off my sheet. Yes, I can't share it. All right. I'll try to keep talking while I'm doing this, so I'll probably be stammering, but, um, what, the hundred sixty thousand that was originally on here, um, for the salt shed was reduced on a hundred fifty thousand. Now, after talking with Bud, to get the project whole, which means paving from, from Wilkes, uh, the inside of the building and the apron, the cop that three thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars for Fremont Power. I had to estimate what it was going to cost to put power in the building, because I don't have MacGuff electrics.
Oh, yeah.
And that was for light, interior lights, exterior lights, running the power from the pole to a panel box. I, I estimated ten thousand dollars, I have no idea what it's going to be at this point, um, and then a fence um, with a gate, because that's going to be wide open now, and we got to stop people from going in there. Um, so that would, that would, I, I put five thousand dollars for that, that total number of what out of that hundred and fifty thousand that was on here, we'd only need sixty eight thousand. So what's the so what out of that? That means that frees up money, eighty thousandish dollars to ob- reobligate somewhere, I had that on that sheet to show you, and you don't have it. So I'm going to look it up and go, I had to walk it through. Right, good.
Does it have to be reobligated to something that was on this ARPA spreadsheet?
Matter of fact, one of the things I put on there, and I'll read it, was, um, to reobligate some of the money to the playground equipment at, um.
Do we feel? And it has to be reobligated before the end of the fiscal year, though.
Uh, yeah, the has to be, the board has to make the resolution before the end of June to encumber the money into the next fiscal year. So I'm, let me find this, I'm hoping I didn't do this, and then no, it's in here.
So it gives us one, one more meeting?
It does. So if you look at this, your sheet, um, where it says um, highway garage salt and sand shed, which is probably on page.
On page two, about two thirds, three quarters of the way down.
So that number that's on the sheet was a hundred and fifty thousand. The true number, if you want to write it down, is sixty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars and thirty nine cents. Think we could probably cover the thirty nine cents without resolution, though. But, um, so that's of the hundred and fifty, you only need sixty eight thousand. That was one.
So we crossed out the hundred and fifty?
I, I, I put one, I put sixty seven nine sixty two thirty nine in there.
Nine sixty two thirty nine.
Correct. And that was to make the project whole with the lighting, the fencing, and the paving. And it depletes the, the two hundred and seventy two thousand that we had, um, from uh, the sale of the old fire station and a hundred and fifty three that the town appropriated back a few years ago with the interest that it earned, and it went from two fifty three to two seventy. So that's what we had available. So Bud Carpenter just got all two seventy two, plus we owe him another almost fifty thousand dollars.
And so what else you got?
Um, storm drainage systems, just a little bit below that.
Ninety thousand.
I, I changed that to one forty. And the notes on here was town share of major stormwater infrastructure, um, two hundred to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, the town has seventy two thousand dollars in highway reserve. And we put thirteen thousand five hundred dollars each year in, into that reserve account. Um, this, this will also provide some funding towards the stormwater project on West Crystal Haven.
So you're taking some of the leftover money from the eighty two thousand?
Right.
From the salt and sand shed and adding it to this?
Correct. And at, at the end, you'll, I'll give you the math at the end.
And how much of that eighty two thousand do you need to the first storm drain?
It went from.
Fifty thousand?
Um, but that also, again, takes into account West Crystal Haven, because we're going to have to do something.
Yeah, we have plenty of stormwater runoff issues in town.
Yeah. Um, then the next line down was the Dewey Field T-ball field.
Correct.
Or no, I added that in there, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, so I added in Dewey Field T-ball field, twenty thousand dollars um, for the new playground set and two picnic tables and some lighting. I'll just go down through this and then we can, after you can, I can answer all your questions.
A resolution tonight?
No, I just wanted you to write it down.
That'll be thirty five thousand that we have.
Can I, let me, can I finish and then we can go back to the, um, I added one in for summer maintenance. Um, as you know, that, the culvert on Brown Farm Road is failing. Um, the cost of that culvert is approximately thirty thousand dollars, and that very number was verified today. Um, if we don't get the grant, we have to do something. That's, that, if we had to pay thirty thousand dollars out of summer maintenance, where the culverts get funded from, that would be three quarters of the budget for the whole year, for the, for the highway department to replace the culverts.
And that thirty is just for the structure?
That is the structure, the baffles, and.
Our guys installing.
Correct. And I, I talked to Jeff, I said, we may have to run, run a bigger excavator, because ours probably will not do that job, but if that, we have to get it done somehow.
Mm-hmm, right.
Um, and to put it into a budget and you spike a budget by thirty thousand, one year to buy one culvert to serve one house, one residence, it's, it's hard to swallow. Um, so this was a way to get that thing done, and if they, if we get the grant, this will be our third effort to do it. Usually the third time's the charm. Um, then this money could then be allocated, other, we need culverts bad, they don't go bad. Um, and the, right now, Jeff's short ten thousand dollars to get the culverts he needs for East Sovereign Road. Um, so if we get the grant, the money could be used for, um, our share of the grant, plus buying some culverts. I'd have to, you know, keep you informed on what's going on with that, but, um, that's, that's just one change, another made it, change I made, I added one in there. I don't think emergency management was on there. Yeah, it was the last page, emergency management, it was five seventy five, I changed it to six hundred, and that's for the uh, purchase of additional cots and blankets, um, so we can house twenty five people overnight at the Legion. Should we have to set up a shelter? Right now, we can accommodate twenty. Um, let me go back up to see what else I might have put above it. That was it. So the total of all the ARPA that we were given, the one million three hundred forty nine thousand and fifty six dollars eighty four cents, what I just proposed, the changes that I just proposed, and I'll change anything else that was on there. Um, I'll take that back, hold on. Tree warden, I reduced that tree warden down at the bottom of the last page uh, to five, to five thousand dollars from five thousand. Paving didn't change, fire department didn't change, salt and sand shed, nothing else changed. The sidewalk project for South Street to Main Street, that didn't change, I think it's still a hundred and fifteen thousand, correct? Yep. Um, that project is this summer. Cars and sales is done, highway garage is, that's already been obligated. Everything else on this list is already either been obligated, like, the top one at twelve hundred dollars for, um, the regional planning commission. Um, I didn't take that out because we still have to do the town plan, we have to pay them, uh, for that. Uh, are part of a grant, so that would cover that, um, so that's why it's in there. Um, but that, those are the major, those are the things I changed, and after all that, the changes, it still leaves fifteen dollars and forty three cents of ARPA. That doesn't count ARPA interest, that's just our net funds.
All those things seem like reasonable things to spend money on, in my opinion, but.
Well, I looked at the budget and said, we've done this in the past and it was not, it wasn't a good outcome, is the board authorize a hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars for paving? We took it out of the budget, paid for ha- half of our paving for the year, was paid for at ARPA, then we had to throw the, the hundred and four five back into the budget the next year, and it spiked, it makes it look terrible.
Yeah.
Um, so I tried to stay away from those type of things that would put us in a jam, like we take it out this year, but we got to put it back next year, because this is a fight, you know, especially large dollar amounts.
Uh, using one-time money should be used for one-time expenses.
And the, the stuff in the bottom, the blue. There was things in the bottom, the eight thousand dollars for the, uh, Dewey Field T-ball field, CVS, we still again, this, this was repairs at CVS, the ones at the time, and there's probably more now, was we still have a water leak behind the wall in the boys' locker room, and the water's been shut off there, but to turn the water back on there, we can't until we find where the leak is.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
That's been repaired.
What's that?
That's been repaired.
That's been repaired? Okay, perfect. Um, but it wouldn't eat up six, you know, six thousand dollars they put in there, but um, then there was fifteen thousand dollars for resurfacing the basketball courts and relining them, to also serve as pickleball courts. Uh, that was the area of where they're going to put the stormwater, um, project in, remove trees overhanging the courts, resurface the driveway, because we're going to tear up that new pavement that just got put down for the, uh, library to get out there, so that's going to be redone. Um, and then upgrade audio visual and virtual equipment, um, at the building to provide better, a better venue for public meetings. Um, then town office was, uh, JS Infrastructure Animal Control Officer, the big one on that one is twelve thousand dollars in town lands um, for the removal of dead and dying trees, I think, hopefully, we've painted a picture for the select board that the cost of removing trees is just astronomical, twelve thousand dollars will get us probably six trees. But that's twelve thousand dollars we don't have to get rid of trees now that Scott, um, our tree warden has identified as.
Well, that's six more trees that are handled at least, for.
Yeah. And Crystal Beach, there's one on there, um, refurbished the basketball court and installed a third surveillance camera. Mar- Martha did share with the public, we had more vandalism up there. Um, and without cameras, we have no chance of finding out who it was, but at least if we have the third camera, they can't, right now, the, with the cameras that are going in, we can't see the beach area out that, that direction, so that camera would go in there to see, because somebody stole the sign, or said, one of the signs that says life, no lifeguard on duty, you know, so that whole sign that's all gone, that's going to be about three hundred dollars to replace it. Um, so for those that say that we're being unreasonable, um, to protecting the place, it just hap- it just keeps going on and on and on. And so Mark, I asked Martha to share it, she did, and at least it's out there. Anyway, that's, and there was another, Crystal Beach, um, for the well, we found, I say we, I wasn't there. Um, when they were putting in the trenching for the electrical to go to the pavilion, they found another well. And they dented the well cap and that's, parts been replaced, but what I'm asking the electrician to do is when they're putting in the power at the pump station, is to run two twenty over there, so we can see if the pump works. And if, because that pump doesn't work, that's, you know, but if it works and water squirts out, we can have the water tested. And, and the, the board didn't want to drill a well up there, but if we can get water from there, and it's tested as potable, we can run it over to the snack shack and, um.
Where is this well?
It's on the, just on the north side of the, um, Sucker Brook, so we'd have to run black plastic underneath the bridge and then bury it from there, and then drain it back every year, but we do that anyway.
Right.
Just going to be doing a, a longer run of it, um, but it'd be.
All this is the cheap part of a well.
Yeah.
The pump was.
I want to, I know, but just, I want to see if the pump works now, so we can see if the, we can get the water out of it, and then we can test the water to see if it's potable, or is it contaminated? Um, but it's just an, it's an opportunity where the board didn't want to, um, approve a well being dug up there, that we might be able to still get potable water there for the, for the snack shack and flush the toilets, drinking, whatever, so, but it might need a cheap day. Um, there's two wells there, we found, last year, we found the first one, and Keith knew where they're, they were, um, from the trailer park that was there. Now we know where two of them are, but, um, that's the closer one. So, just, and that's interest, that does nothing to do with resolu- the stuff in the blue has nothing to do with the resolutions. That's money, just, that's money that you can obligate to do things, these are just suggestions.
I think this board was in agreement with all your suggestions for the resolution.
Yeah.
So are you going to be putting one together for the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I have it here, you just, for some reason, you got a copy, it doesn't have the red highlights on it, so, um, I will.
But it still has to be a formal resolution that we have to adopt.
Correct. So that's one of the reasons tonight is if you're in agreement with this stuff, I can put the resolution together for the next meet.
I think that we should ask him to proceed, but it's the board's pleasure here.
Absolutely. I think those all seem like reasonable expenditures.
So Mike, see, please proceed with creating your resolution.
You got it. Thank you.
Anything else on this before we move on?
Not, not barring your questions.
Any questions on the board? Right?
Um, my only question is, and I'm glad, how come the salt shed went down from a hundred and fifty to six eight thousand? Where was the savings?
Um, it was a guess on our part, we didn't really know where we were going to land when this first went on the resolution, or I mean, on the spreadsheet. But once we got the bill from, um, not just the bill, once, when he bid on the, the project, it was less than what we anticipated. And I didn't, I didn't go back to the board to ask them to change it, because you never know what contingencies might come up on it, so it was just left there until, till now. And the good news is that costs us about what, is, costs about what it would have cost us if we went the grant route, but it got done two years earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, what we did, right, we took a worst case estimate, and then it turned out to be much better than we anticipated, and that's where that surplus came from.
Thank you.
So now we're going to put it someplace else where the town can use one-time money for one-time expense and make the town better. That's our plan at least. Anything else on this before we move on?
Nice work, Mike.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to talk about the, uh, crossroad at the north end of East and West tonight, we're talking about the name only, we're not talking about whether or not it's going to be reopened or not. I've gathered data on that, but that's a discussion that we scheduled for July seventeenth, and we're going to stick to that schedule, I think, it's appropriate that the residents up there have the opportunity to weigh in on that. So as far as naming that, we're talking about just the little connector between East and West Crystal Haven.
I wa- I like your Crystal Haven Loop.
Um, the board have any other input on that?
Kerns Loop.
I don't really want to show favoritism towards one president over another. What, that's.
Any input on it one way or the other, I don't care.
Intentious loop?
It's a crossover from two roads that is what it is.
But if we want to get on the state register and all that, we have to put a name on it, so.
Do we want to wait, do we want to wait until we decide what we're actually doing with it?
Whether we leave it open all summer long or not, doesn't change.
Needs a name.
It should have a name and get put on the list for state, or for state compensation for down roads.
Okay. Jeff just texted me too, the stop signs are installed up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. So, do we need a motion, Mike?
Yeah, to name the road, yeah.
So do we have a motion to name the road?
I'll make a motion that we name the road, Crystal Haven Loop.
I'll second it.
Well, motion in a second, any more discussion?
Would we like to see if the residents up there would like to name that?
But you mean, you start going to, uh, decisions by committee on something like this, it could drag out for years.
I will give them fifteen minutes at the next meeting to come up with one.
You're nicer than I'd be.
I think we should just call a question and move on.
Okay.
But that's only my opinion, the rest of the board have an opinion?
Well, everything, it's Crystal Haven, it's Chris, it's Crystal. Well, everything, it's Crystal Haven, it's Chris- it's Crystal Lane, right? And then Cr- East Crystal Haven and West Crystal Haven, so it's been the theme of Crystal Haven or Crystal in the name.
North Crystal Haven. If there was another route that alleviated some of the pushback.
And there's some people you're not going to probably.
Sometimes it doesn't make any difference. Sometimes if you. Throw the dog a biscuit, it doesn't bite.
Sometimes. I'm inclined to go forward and call the question. Does the rest of the board agree with that?
Motion was made.
Motion in the second was made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Crystal Haven Loop it is. We'll talk about whether or not we keep it open all summer at a subsequent meeting.
Multiple times.
Rec Center naming and short and long-term rental agreements.
If I, I make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, that the long-term rental agreement, we do an executive session, because I have some stuff that would. Put the town at a disadvantage by talking about it out here.
So, the Rec Center naming, is that something that uh? I, I saw it on the agenda. I didn't know that we're going to be there. I, I thought that we should call it a community center personally. And as far as a name, I'm kicked around a lot of ideas, but I don't have anything that's really. That I might hardestet on. So what's the rest of the board's opinion on this, and then we'll open it up to the.
I think that we tasked the Recreation Commission with coming up with a long-term vision, and it would be a. A bad forum on our part to move ahead on this without their input. I agree with that, absolutely.
The only suggestion I have is that we rebrand it from Rec Center to Community Center. Because it's, as we proved the other night. At that, by the way, I wish I could have been there, but I was out of town at my niece's graduation, and I planned on volunteering and then realized I couldn't. Um. That we rebrand that as a community center as opposed to a rec center, because a rec center refers, that's all it's for. Whereas you guys definitely proved last Saturday night that it's more than just for recreation, it's all about community. And that's my opinion.
But recreation isn't just sports.
I realize that, but that's not necessarily the perception that that some people might have. That's the only reason I would suggest we rebrand it as a community center versus a rec center. But, once again, I'm only one person, and you guys are the rec commission and the Friends of Rec, and you guys can go off and brainstorm and come back with a recommendation.
Oh, we already have a Castleton Community Center.
That was going to be my comment.
Well, I mean, that's why it would have to have a unique name.
But I think there would be some hurt feelings if we did that.
Yeah.
Recreation and Performing Arts Center of Castleton.
There you go.
Or something, you see what I'm saying, I'm trying to broaden the, broaden the appeal and broaden the scope.
Anyway, Costa, that sign's gonna be.
Mary, are you still on?
Yeah, I was just going to say what uh somebody just said. I think that we have something that has community center name on it, that's. I know it's mostly for seniors and it's, but it's widely respected and we all love it, and I think that that. Would not be a good move for us to use the term community center for the rec center, but that's just my opinion. I'm not speaking for the commission. I'm just, I guess, Dick, I'm just asking for you to give the commission the leeway. To come up, oppose all names and and not have to stick with community center.
Yeah, I just threw that out there to to rebrand it, and I wasn't emotionally attached to community center. I just think it should be something. Broader and broader sculpt than Rec Center.
And what kind of timeframe do you think you're going to be on before you come to us with something?
Are you talking to me as the commission?
I am, yes. Well. I'm trying to pin you to a day, but are you talking July of this year, July of next year?
Uh, well, the plan. Uh, timeline that we just came up with is a year, so um I don't think I could say anything different than that without going back to the commission.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
You still have something, Josh?
No, I was.
You're all good?
What Mary said.
Okay, but you see my thought, you got, you guys get my thoughts and then, you know, would you come back with a wonderful, brilliant idea? I'm on board. Okay, anything else on this? Managers report.
Um, page one, um, I put action needed, so it goes, it bleeds over to page two. Um, sounds like we already did that. That was the resolution for the money for the, our share of it, so that's good. Um. The small-scale bike and pet grant. Um, we, we had some parcel that changed hands so that the stuff that the was put together is no longer accurate, so their upgrade. Attorneys upgrade that, working with the engineer on it, the, for the temporary construction easements. I'm just trying to find the ones I highlighted. Um, Depot Harris, we talked about. Uh, on page uh fourteen. Um. I middle field. Um, my note was the Castle Parks and Rec Director needs to coordinate with Friends of Rec. Um, Friends of Castle and Parks and Rec discuss what work needs to be completed, what resources are available. Um, because the money that's, that's in the budget for that. Sunset's on thirty June, and we're literally two weeks pretty much away um to use that money. If, if it's something to build a dugout with or a bench or whatever it is, as long as we purchase the. As long as we purchase the equipment or the, or the materials, um, that's, that's the key thing. As, because the invoice has to be dated before June thirty. So I'll work with John on that one, uh, because there is some money in there for that. Same with the T-ball field and the. Um, Dewey Field. There's money that's sitting there that we gotta um. Spend either as a, as a purchase of material or if it's hiring of a contractor, the, that has to be done, but. This money, each, this is like three years we've been carrying money around, and we just got to get it done. Uh, this, I, I said, I, I told the departments, I'm not bringing any resolutions for carryovers from budgets. To the select board this year because we're so close on, on money, so if it's not spent, it just goes back to the tax bracket. I don't want to spend it on frivolously or needlessly, but if there's need, then it needs to be spent by the end of the year, this year. Um, with, on page sixteen, we talked about woke paving. Traffic ordinance, um, I gotta get back on Pete about this. Um, it's changed hands with, it started with Karen Stewart, and then it was um. Went to uh Anna Widdmore and now Christine, and we've got to get that ordinance. That ordinance is, is in such disarray. It's copies of motions that were made back in nineteen nineties, two thousands. And when the, when somebody goes to court to fight, somebody's fighting a ticket, they have to bring this monstrosity book and thumb through things, because it's not an ord- It's an ordinance that was written in the eighties. Um, early eighties that has a bunch of papers shoved in a binder and. For the officers going over there and the judge sees them rifling through papers, it's just an embarrassment. And it doesn't really help the officers, um, you know.
Know it's. Better things for them to do.
Yeah. So that's got to get back on track. Um, we already did the L and P. And the reappraisals, and we probably all have got phone calls about the reappraisals. Um, I had a long one that meeting today with um the guy from um West Crystal Haven, matter of fact. Um, I got him set straight on what he needs to do, but most of the questions that we're getting are like. How do I file a grievance? Or what's my property value? And um, the ones that I can't answer are things like, how do they arrive at this number? And I'm like, there's two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars we paid to a company to do this, and I wasn't one of them. So I defer them to Tyler Technologies and John Vickery in particular, um, who was the guy doing the market. Assessment stuff, so, um, but lot, generated a lot of questions, um, some emails or uh social media posts, et cetera, but. Um. Get to the twenty-third of June, for those that are listening out there, twenty-third of June to file your grievance. Procedures are on the website. Um, if you go to the Assessor's Department of the Castle, the website, Town Castle website, and uh it. Lots of information out there, but I told them, called, the numbers out there for Tyler Technologies and to our assessor and her email address. And her phone and her, her email's been blowing up too.
When do we file our grand list?
It's been, it was filed June third.
It was.
And, oh, no, I'm sorry, June there, June, what's it, Friday was June fifth.
Okay.
Um, it was Friday on Friday. The mailers were sent out from the printing company, so you may have already received yours, some people have. Um, that, that booklet that they were talking about. So that was mailed out, and so now it's the, starting today or tomorrow, or whatever it was, the, the tick, they start ticking for the. Uh, grievance period.
We have, we have a grand list filed.
We do.
And we have our budget approved for this coming fiscal year, so when are we, do you know when we're going to set a tax rate? When do you anticipate doing that?
Probably the first week in July.
Okay.
The grievance is before we know what we're going to have to pay.
Yeah, so the, the, the grievances will go through their evolution and they couldn't go all the way to the Board of Abatement. So what we might am having to do is send out amended tax bills. So the tax bills are normally generated on what we know right now. And then, once the grievance peers through and the Board of Abatements uh completed, then we'll know how that. What adjustments need to be made, need to be made to the tax rate. It'd be adjusted tax bills will go out.
You're not grieving your tax bill, you're grieving your assessed value.
But.
So you may be able to get your assessed value raised.
Tax bill. The bottom line is people are looking at the tax bill. If I pay a thousand now and all of a sudden I gotta pay five. That, that is what.
Well, you really can't know that until we set the tax rate. That's why I asked the question of when we're going to set the tax rate. Because once you know the tax rate, you know your new assessed value. Because our tax rate with our grand list going up, our tax rate should go down.
Will definitely go down.
Um, so what we need, before you can forecast your. Municipal tax for next fiscal year, you need to know what the tax rate is. That's why I asked the question, so that it's on the public record when we're going to set the tax rate. So the people will know when they can forecast their estimated taxes for the next fiscal year.
I, I'm just.
No, he's gonna, normally we do it the first week, meeting in July.
Yeah.
What you put on Facebook, not, not Facebook, Front Porch Farm was very informative.
Thank you.
And I would think that that would help people. Just to see something double scares the hell out of me.
Right, right, doesn't.
Doesn't mean that it's going to double your, your taxes, but that's the first thing that people think.
Correct. You know, if everyone's assessment doubled, the tax rate would cut in half.
You think so, yes.
But your tax bill wouldn't change.
Correct. The tax rate would go down, so your tax bill would stay the same. I printed that off, I've given it to fifty people. I think it does help people to understand exactly how that process works.
I thought it was very well-written.
Thank you.
Just to give you a, a little bit, our last, our, our last reassessment was two thousand fifteen, and my assessed value changed significantly. And my act municipal tax bill actually went down, not by a lot, but by a little bit. But municipal rate, we won't get into education rate. That's a whole different animal. I won't pretend to. Understand that completely.
Um, Mr. John, on, on the um, your purchaser's approves Tyler Technologies. So I will, I would like to make a statement about where we're at paying them, if you wouldn't mind.
You can do that now or during the discussion for purchasers, your choice.
Um, I'll just do it now if you're.
Okay, go ahead.
So the money that we had, um, the two hundred seventy-five thousand is what the, what we paid Tyler Technologies, um, we're short. What, what was in our coffers and what we had to pay them, we're short like forty-five thousand, forty-seven thousand dollars, and um. So how, the question is, how will you pay for that? Right now, it's just being applied to the assessor's budget and her operating budget, so she's going to show overspent. On her operating budget by forty-something thousand dollars. She didn't spend her whole budget, so let's just say it was forty-seven and she didn't spend two thousand out of it. She'd be overspent by forty-five thousand. So that's what, part of this process of um managing the total town budget. Uh, have to take all that into consideration, so. Again, it's Robin Peter to pay Paul, and I hate, I, I hate the, the thought of that, because not everybody benefits from some of these things. The reappraisal was the whole town, so the cost will get, kind of gets shared by everybody on that one. Um, so that wasn't so bad, but those ones that are, somebody, the police department overspent, everybody kind of gets the benefit of that, but if it was one of those things where. Not everybody gets the benefit, um, and everybody has to share an over expenditure, that's, I don't like going down that road. So we're not, and we're not going down that road, but it, her budget will show as being overspent.
Anything else on the manager's report? Questions for the town manager? And we're going to move on to purchase orders.
One second, please. I thought I had one question here that I was.
Okay.
Now I guess he answered it, thank you. I'll stop, Dick.
Oh, you're up.
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four one zero two, Tyler Technologies Incorporated. For the sum of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. And that is for project number one five zero nine eight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Mark?
Is uh Mary Jo satisfied with what's taken place up to this point before we pay this?
Probably as satisfied as, if she probably can be. A lot of questions weren't answered on how the market studies were done and that kind of stuff until last Friday. We didn't give her a lot of chance to dive into anything, but um, I think she's working well with. Jacob and the team here, uh, the Tyler team here, uh, but. Yeah, there's some questions that didn't get answered really, didn't, didn't satisfy her that way, but um, as far as what the products that they did and what they presented. We're, we're good.
They fulfilled their contract.
Unfortunately, um, yes, well, fortunately, I guess they did, but um, not to, not to every. Nitinoid detail that they do.
Just, just a quick question for you, um, when did they get paid the other ten percent after the, the payments? They were retaining ten percent?
Yeah, I, I had to read the contract. I'm not sure if it's after the grievance period, because they have to still be here for the grievance period. Um, they're, matter of fact, it's going to be here in this building, um, with two members of Tyler, Dor- Jacob Dorman and somebody else. And Mary Jo, our assessor, will be present, but they have to be public meetings, so they're, they're going to be running their computers separately. Um, recording it, but anybody can come into it, it's a, anybody can come into anybody's hearing, because it has to be a public record. A public meeting, I'm sorry, so, but this will be.
So if you got nothing better to do that day, come here and listen to grievances all day.
Bring in something that's crunchy and.
Any more discussion?
I. I'd like to put a hold on this until Mary Jo gives all the questions answered.
Well, I think she did. It's just they were late, just coming in.
Oh, I thought you said they were still.
No, there was just things that she is not happy about that. Last Friday, she finally got the answer about the market study stuff and.
She hasn't had time to digest it.
So she hasn't had time to like review it before the grand list was filed. So, not that it may have changed anything, because the, she doesn't do the actual reappraisals, but um. She said it'll all come out in the wash as far as the um, people that grieve, if there's something wrong on a card. Hopefully they catch, somebody re- reviews it.
Catches it?
Um, versus her catching it. Um, and have to.
She's going to be a busy girl with everybody coming in and saying, I want my card.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the ladies up front can also print out the cards for them, so it's not, it's not going to fall, just fall on Mary Jo.
Anything else on this? We'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four one zero five one zero four. To any M R C for the annual support. Uh, for the sum of five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second, there's a motion in a second.
This is our accounting system.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four one zero five to the B L C T. For annual dues for twenty-fif- fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for the sum of seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Back up.
Been moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four zero four nine to Fabian Earth Moving for the repair of Route thirty for the sum of sixty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars.
I'll second it. Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Um, just. Where is that money coming from, like?
Out of the sewer budget.
The sewer budget. The money's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We still have one defeat, not Fabians, but, um, well, fading, and that was in your packet. I put a copy of it in there. I don't know if you have, um, I think, I think it was in my, it may have been in my report, but it, we owe them that, whatever the total is.
Um, twenty-nine, three twenty-five.
It is on there or is it?
Yeah. It's the last one.
Oh, it's just on the front page, the, the one I have anyway.
Oh, okay. No, we got.
Oh, I had you, um, this must be the, the sixth copy must go to you.
Wow, yeah, that's, that would, that makes sense. Thank you. I don't have two brothers though.
All right, Rob.
Did we, did we, did I call that question?
I don't think so.
Any more discussion on that? Fabian Earth Movie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three eight six nine to Innovative Municipal Products for looks like four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine gallons of calcium chloride for the sum of six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Back up.
Been moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four one zero eight to Welp paving for the sum of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that was paving Route thirty for the sewer line repairs.
Second.
Would have been seconded. That's also coming out of the sewer budget.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, I have the warrants.
Make a motion to approve warrant number zero six zero nine R for the sum of one hundred and four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Warrant number zero six zero six for the sum of forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Warrant number zero six zero nine for the sum of two million, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents. And warrant number zero six zero five P for the sum of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and twelve cents.
All seconded.
Move in seconded. Time to pay the schools. All, any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hard to spit that number out.
I know.
That's the big one.
That's the school. Sometimes we see that in the separate warrant, but not this time.
It didn't go for two months, but I need your pen tonight.
No. There you go. It was spelled very well. Have it. I need to go to Polton, I went to Perhain, so. Sorry.
You guys didn't learn to write, right?
No. But we can eat lead paint.
That, your excuse for being the way you are.
It's only my hat.
You got them all.
I think so.
Only four.
Okay.
Those are the other copies. Okay, out of my packet. That's my, don't need to look at it again tonight, but. We hope.
Yeah, exactly.
I was gonna say, are you sure about that?
I am sure the gravity pulls down. And as long as it does, doors will never sag up.
Yeah, it was kinda leaking over here pretty close.
I've been watching it.
Yeah.
So have you. Thank you for your support and cooperation.
Well, I mean, that is, but it's like, just like an angel you had in here just like, doesn't now, but it just looked just like an angel.
It seemed an angel.
Oh, yeah. You look like a bore age. Well, thank you.
Well, it's for him, I'm judging.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I can assure you I'm not.
Hey, you can move.
I'm sending you guys a copy of the harvest.
Okay. Selective word comments. Mary Lee.
These two letters that we received.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Tell me about them.
We didn't receive them.
Well, we received them. We're gonna send them.
Last meeting, I believe it was Mr. Brown that had brought up, um, a letter of appreciation to um, sellers for the work they did down at Dewey Field. So that's the catalyst behind one of them. And, uh, the one behind Doc Dirksen, um, I've had so many comments of the good work that he's done uh, for the last few years of the flower gardens and now it's, it's expanded to the beach as well. And, uh, so I decided that, uh, the old lady came in, a resident came in and asked me about it. And I said, I'll, I'll gin something up. So that's what the thing was about.
He was caught red-handed improving the front of the path of the firehouse today.
Was he?
Yeah.
Did he have clothes on?
Yes.
Sometimes he forgets them.
So he's done Crystal Beach.
Right.
The firehouse.
Right.
The town hall.
Yes.
The parking ride.
Yep.
And he's been down at the rec center. Of course, he's part of the horticulture club and he's been planting flowers along that fence, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the horticulture group did the, uh, flower gardens in front of the post office.
Right.
But I did, this was just the Doc Dirksen because he's, he, even though he's a member of the, the horticulture group, um, this was for the last like four years.
He's been, he's such a nice guy. He, uh, he's put a lot of time into that. Really makes our community look nice.
Did I make a comment about the letters? These, both of these topics were brought up at the most recent recreation commission meetings. And if we could be CC'd on that because the commission has shared that.
You are, you are CC'd on that.
It hasn't been sent out yet because I had to go, so tomorrow, but you're on the CC list for it. The commissioners and the rect directors on it.
And the other one is to John, who, who runs the construction company. And, uh, obviously they, he and then Kyle Cornell lives in the community and they did a beautiful job down at Dewey. And, uh, Mike and I spoke with both of them at the cash bash and, and they have other ideas on the horizon.
Nice.
You know, both of those gentlemen have young children that will be in the school system for quite a while. And, uh, yeah, I think they're gonna be really, really good community partners for a long time.
So we actually need, we can just direct you to assign these and, and them out, right?
Yeah, I did, I didn't want to do it before the board looked at it, so if you're, you're good with it, then I will send them out tomorrow.
Things great.
Well done.
I'm absolutely fine with it.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for the effort, Mike.
You're absolutely welcome.
So that one, Mary Lee, anything else?
No.
Huh?
I don't have anything this week.
Mark?
I don't have anything else. Rob, um, just two quick questions for Mike. Uh, any reason why there's no pig TV?
No, they, they, if they called me today, I was off today, so they may have, but I didn't. Usually I get a transcript, uh, from my email to a message and, I mean, from my, uh, voicemail to a message, nothing.
Okay. I didn't see an email from them, but I got deluged through the emails today.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Sometimes I get an email from the bots.
Oh, yeah.
I don't recall seeing one, but I got the, oh, well, it's been thirty junk mails today.
They've been here the last couple of meetings because I have it.
Yeah, they've been here.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay, so for anyone who's not aware, you can also, um, request the Zoom recording. And I'm sure that the town, I'm speaking on behalf of your staff, but your town staff would be happy to share the link to the Zoom recording, right?
Yeah, it'll be in the minutes for, um, they put the link in the minutes. So if they go to the minutes when they're posted, you'll see the, a link to the Zoom recording.
So the recording is probably available. Okay. Uh, the new tandem truck, what is the status of that?
Uh, it's waiting decals.
We're just waiting for decals?
Yeah.
At, at the.
Millers out of, um, whatever, well, over Pollitt. Uh, we, we have to bring it down there, so the sewer truck needs decals, the, um, uh, the sixty-five hundred needs decals and the sewer, so sewer truck, the tandem and let's see the one.
Does he have a tandem?
Yes, the sixty-five hundred.
Tandems at our garage?
Yeah, I've been there for a while. I, I see you, I see you got some pictures of it next to the single axle. It looks like a, that single axle's like a baby. It's so small compared to that.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, and the, the sixty-five hundred, uh, Jeff told me today that, um, they're gonna, they're gonna put everything on it but the wing. Um, by the summer, coming up in the middle of June, uh, the wing still needs a cylinder. And Jeff said, oh, just, I need the truck and so as long as I have to get it back to put the cylinder, the wing cylinder on it by October, um, I will be good.
So the truck is down there right now?
It's sitting here, uh, waiting for them to tell us when the, they said the middle of June, like the fifteenth or sixteenth. I think the week, the week of the sixteenth.
It's a Monday, I think, the sixteenth.
Yeah, that will.
That's all I got. Okay.
I do have one more thing.
Now's the time.
Yeah, now's the time. Um, I received email late this afternoon from Christine putting together the questions. Uh, and when I was going over, I find I don't have the most recent UDR. And I don't know if the rest of you are also missing the most recent.
You're gonna have to double check it.
And I've got February, it's not March. Yes. And so when I was looking at it, I had put, I have her look at page thirty, thirty-five. Thirty-eight. So what happened for three pages? That's why I'd like to come in and pick up a new one.
Um, but did, did I, did you guys should get an email from me on that one?
Yeah.
You did send it electronically, yes.
I'll print out whoever wants one, just let me know and I can put your.
That one was nice because it had the notes on the side.
Yeah. Yeah. But we can, when we print it one, we can print it with that. Just the print on the page is gonna be smaller, but we can have it with the notes that are over there. We can print it.
I just looked at it on the computer.
I don't like doing that.
I don't either, but that was my option, so. Bear it through it.
But just let me know if you want one. I'll just throw it in your mailbox.
I'll stop up tomorrow and pick it up.
Okay, I'm gonna be, uh, I got a VA appointment in the morning, so, um, I can leave a note for, um, somebody to print one for you.
Okay.
But I have her make two because I want to make sure I've got this absolutely right. I want to make sure that the one I'm using is the right one. But I know it's a lot of paper, but it's cheap insurance.
And I also noticed that Bob and I were the only ones on the list that Christine's put together so far.
Think I know what you're talking about.
Not the naughty list, right? Is it the naughty list?
You're honored if there's a naughty list.
UDR input.
Oh, okay.
Not even fifty percent. The board didn't get fifty percent.
What?
Five people, only two put in there, so you didn't get, you didn't get fifty percent of them back.
I put some in.
No, you and I are the only ones. None of the others.
Oh, I thought you were talking about me.
Oh, you didn't, did you?
No.
Have you read it?
No.
I'll see.
Well, I've read the whole thing, but Rob and I had the same input, so I didn't see any point in.
Well, that's okay.
Sending them again.
I'm pretty confident I only have one thing to add, but I'll.
I'm pretty confident that you've got the, uh, grammarical, the grammar stuff taking care of, so.
I'm not sure if the ethics, I'll update the ethics.
That's what I was talking about. I haven't done that yet.
It takes you an hour. If that.
I was told forty minutes yet.
Forty-eight minutes.
Okay. Roy?
Um, I haven't had a chance to read it again, but do any of you know whether the, uh, uh, property, um, uh, cover on your land has changed from twenty to twenty-five, like I requested a long time ago?
I'm not sure I understand your question. What are you asking, right?
In other words, if there can be no bigger building on your property over twenty percent. In other words, you have to have, you cannot go to twenty-five percent. In other words, the house on my land cannot go, take over twenty percent.
Of the lot size, the footprint size.
Oh.
Follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I do understand your question now, Roy. I don't have an answer for you, but I can get you one.
And I requested that it go to twenty-five percent just because I look at my property and it's just seem to be a hindrance.
I don't think that's consistent for every area. Right, I mean, it does.
Not for the lake.
Pardon me?
Not for the lake. Properties that are, you know.
Village commercial was updated as well. Um, so you could use smaller lots.
Well, my, my place is in a residential commercial. Or a residential, uh, I want, I want to not say commercial, but, um, small, small businesses or something.
Village commercial.
Is that where we are over there in Hydeville?
I'd have to look. I think that's what you're in.
So is that the twenty, twenty rule?
I think that changed, Roy. I guess, I shouldn't have spoke up because I don't have the, I don't have that answer without looking.
Anyway, just, I don't want to take up more of your time, but I was just concerned about it.
Yeah, we're struggling with this a little too. It's a really, really, really big document.
I'll do it right. That's all I can say.
We're really trying hard to do that. Whatever's right and whatever's wrong, yeah. Oh.
Right in the eyes of the holder.
I got the finger. I've got your question written down, Roy. We'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mary Lee?
No.
I am all set. So we're gonna go to action items. The only thing I have is that we all gotta look at the sewer budget and be ready for, um, a, a discussion on that in the next meeting. And what else do we have for action items besides all the stuff we gave Mike to do?
No, we do have the UDR meeting next Monday.
I haven't firm that up, but I will.
Okay.
There was a time, so the sixteenth is the date and, but it was left open on whether it was six or seven PM, so when we do the, the agenda, we just need to know what time.
So it's still six, still the sixteen. You just have to find it.
Now, what's the board's preference? Six or seven?
Doesn't matter with me.
Does anyone have a preference?
That Bob's faulting is not gonna be around.
Well, I might be able to zoom in. It'd be better if it was seven for me, but I don't know.
You do have to read it for sure.
Who else is at this meeting?
We're hoping to get some of the planning commissioned.
Or anybody else that wants to come.
Well, it's gonna be a meeting in public.
Hmm, it's a public meeting.
No.
Or in public.
It's a meeting in public.
Yeah.
So what we can do is we'll post the agenda and we'll have discussion between the board and the planning commission. And at the end of the meeting, we will open it up for public discussion.
Right.
Because it's a meeting in public, not a public meeting. That's the difference.
I don't care what time.
Okay.
We're having the best from everybody.
Rob, or Bob, what's your name, Bob? Would you, uh, give me your best guess in a couple of days, then we'll firm that.
Sure.
Because we have to publish the agenda by Friday.
And you need to read that before.
And you need to read it by.
A hundred and forty pages.
Hundred and fifty-eight.
Yeah, hundred and sixty-ish.
So, um, anything else on action items?
Believe I'm good.
Then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for. You have an action item?
Uh, no, but I messed up. I, they were talking about their cash bash and I didn't speak up. Castleton has been chosen as our site for the Fire, State Firefighter One, Firefighter Two program for this year. The class.
The classes will be starting here this fall.
Oh, cool.
I sent Mike the thing, but I think it was Friday, probably after all your stuff was published, so you didn't. Probably guys didn't see it, but.
That's at least the second time they've used that facility for this program.
They love this facility and just. One of the what made me think about it and I didn't know when to bring it up when Mike says the. Equipment at the village school, just in case we have a conflict on nights when there's meetings, so we had an alternative site. That's. I I don't know what nights they're gonna have it sometimes because they're gonna try to do a firefighter, one firefighter, do combination program this year. So as John can testify, because he took the last one, that's a lot of nights.
Well, if there's a conflict with this building. Odds are we can. Work it into the other building. Do you agree with that, John?
Yeah.
Well.
And I Mike had knew this. We'd applied for it and we're lucky the state granted Breton County class and we're the host site, so.
Well, whatever you have to do, need to do to and best to do to help you make that happen, let us know.
I'll let Mike know, but we got three or four guys in in our in our department that wanted to take it, so.
Super. Several classrooms that aren't really being utilized right now, so.
What was his name? Ray taught me back in Brandon in what nineteen ninety, what?
It was.
It's been a while.
Jesus.
Okay, anything else for action items? That's it. We're gonna move all entertain a motion for executive session for personnel.
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel at nine twenty five or.
Yeah, nine thirty.
With the owner.
With the board, the town manager, and you want the rec director, John? Or Mike, what's your name, Mike? And with John Alexander, the rec director. Want to stay for an executive session, John?
Yep. Yep. Who seconded it?
Nobody, yeah, right? I'll second it. Been moved in seconded. We go into executive session. All all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. We are in executive session.
And we're at what time? Nine thirty.
Look to me, Brian.
She had no business. There you go. Not too many.
You know what to say.
Recording's on.
And make a motion to come out of executive session at eleven eighteen with no action taken.
Second.
Moving seconded to go come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to go on into executive session at eleven nineteen with the select board and the town manager for litigation.
I'll second it. Moving seconded to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And who seconded coming? Well. Rob made the motion at eleven eighteen.
Bob. Okay.
So we're in.
You would have if you needed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion.
And make a motion to come out of executive session with no action taken at eleven twenty nine for litigation.
I'll second it. Moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to go into executive session for contracts with the town manager and the select board at eleven twenty nine.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to come out of executive session at eleven thirty one with no action taken.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor?